This meeting is being recorded, or it's being shown on the chairman and I as we speak. It's also recorded and will be shown throughout the week. We had a little carryover from our last meeting, so I will entertain a motion to recess for ten minutes.
No, you can just declare a recess for ten minutes.
Okay, so we're gonna declare a recess for ten minutes, and then we'll come back and we'll get our regular meeting going. So I apologize for the inconvenient loss of the... We'll call this meeting back to order. Meeting back to order, please. Okay, we'll start off with the pledging conditions.
My pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, while we're all standing, I would like to mention the passing of Ines Hotley. Mrs. Hotley was a longtime resident of Dayton, and I think was known by many, many people in town. And in her memory, I ask for a moment of silence, please. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. The first order of business is a proposal from One Connection for a medical marijuana facility, I believe.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me see the order.
Probably if you could stand up there, or whoever.
If you prefer, sure.
Well, they can get a better...
They just have a microphone over there, that's why.
Thank you. My name is Valerio Romano, I'm an attorney with Vicente Cedarburg. We're a national law firm that only does cannabis businesses. We cite cannabis businesses and do compliance for them nationwide. We're out of Denver, Boston, Los Angeles, and we just opened a place in Jacksonville. We represent One Connection Corp., who I'm joined with Rob Caruso and Rob Caruso. Rob in front is the founder of One Connection. So, for me during the course, you know, we have a few minutes, we can chat about this. If the board has any questions about whether it's medical or adult-use cannabis, I'm here, I'd love to answer them. This is really all I think about.
You do both?
We do, we do. Our proposal, though, tonight is only about medical. So we're asking ultimately for a letter of support or non-opposition to cite a medical marijuana dispensary at 100 William Street. So, and I know that that's gonna take a little bit of work with the planning board and two men zoning, but you know, that's our proposal location. We had met with your town administrator, Ms. Ehrenstein, and we've met with a member of the task, the local task force, and some other folks, some of the local folks who were very supportive of the use, and it seemed like that location may actually be an appropriate location.
Excuse me, I do Robert J. and Robert A.
Robert A.
Okay, thank you.
And so, yeah, so we're here to ask for that letter of support. What I'd like to do, the way I'd like to run it quickly if I can, is just have Rob talk a little bit about his team, just so you get to know him. He's really ultimately the applicant and gonna be the operator here. And then I can go a little bit about how one of these things works, and we'll make it quick, and then I can answer any questions the board might have about the proposal. Rob, you wanna switch? Does the board have, I know we submitted this deck in the materials, would you like me to hand out a few?
I have one, but I'd like one in color. For files, filing purposes.
To the chair, yeah, thank you.
Thank you very much for having me here today. My name's Rob Caruso, I am the founder of One Connection. I am a resident of Attleboro for about thirty...
Excuse me, sir, excuse me.
Sorry, your name is? I think I gave three to the chair, I'm sorry.
Oh, did you?
Four, my apologies.
Mr. Chairman.
My fault.
Okay, no problem.
So I am a resident of Attleboro for about thirty-two years now. I am currently employed by Comcast. I've been employed by Comcast for about seventeen, eighteen years now. I specialize in home security, cable TV, internet installations, and troubleshooting. I did start the medical marijuana company about a year ago. For my own experience, it's helped me with my medical issues. I've learned a lot of skills, gained a lot of experience within the last five years, cultivation and manufacturing medically-infused products. I did put together a board of directors, consisted of my dad, who is the CFO. My dad does have experience running companies right here in Dayton as well, custom labeling and packaging right on 620 Spring Street, the old mill. I do have, me personally, I don't have experience running, starting a company, but I did bring in some good support, Mike Davis, who is here with us now, my dad as well with that. Also, my brother, who is a partner with Deloitte, he is actually on the, on the team as well. And we also have a nurse, who is very, very good with the educational part of medical marijuana.
Is that Kristen Milo?
Yes, Kristen Milo, correct. Thank you.
Do you have other facilities already open, or is this the first one? Okay.
So, the voters passed medical marijuana in 2012, and so all these years later, there are actually only twenty-two dispensaries open still in the Commonwealth. So it's still really sort of untapped, and very few applicants. There's, I think since August of 2013, there's been in excess of four hundred applicants, and there's only twenty-two open. So very few applicants actually have the sort of experience, unless they're coming from another jurisdiction. And so what's nice, what you have in front of you are local folks. One of them operated a business in Dayton for fifteen years, and they're all from, you know, nearby towns to operate this business, as opposed to having maybe somebody with more significant cannabis experience, but from Colorado or California, who really doesn't care about, you know, about what's going on here locally. And so, it's a good team, they have a professional background, they have a significant, serious interest in medical marijuana and what it can do for patients. So it's, it's a good proposal and a good team. And if the board would like, I'd like to quickly run through, you know, how one of these dispensaries operates and sort of what it takes, 'cause I think it's, you know, what they're proposing is cultivation, processing, and dispensing at that William Street location. So a fully vertically integrated model.
Would you, would you be building a new building there?
Yes. So, yeah, building from scratch, the landlord has agreed to send, sell us a few acres. We'd probably like to start with something around fifteen thousand square feet, obviously subject to special permit through the planning board, which is what your bylaw requires. And of course, engineering, and we'd get a stamp, and work with architects to put together a solid proposal once we get to that, that spot. We're actually about as far as you can get in the application process. We're on connection right now until we receive a letter of support or a letter of non-opposition from, from our host community, which we hope is here. And I, I believe you had one in your materials, but if not, if you'd like to, if you'd like to pass this down, if I might through the chair. So there, there's a few copies there, they're all, yeah. And so really what we're asking for is, is one of these, is a letter of support and non-opposition. That's a template from the department, yes.
So, about this specifically, the board can't really promise this, because we have to go to town meeting. This proposed location, although being discussed by the planning board, I believe, is not actually in our medical overlay. So how, how does it delay you, because we have to wait?
Yeah, so Ms. Ehrenstein, and through the chair if I might respond, yeah, thank you. So when we talked about this, what I thought we might be able to do to move our application forward, when we sat in your office as well, we talked about it, is potentially amending the language from the template letter to sort of, you know, to make it clear to the department, you know, that, that it's not, it's not zoned yet, but, but you would support it in the event that it becomes properly zoned. And so, and that would allow us to proceed with the application process, but of course, we would not be able to open up until we get the proper, until we get through town meeting, and I believe that's June 4th. So we wouldn't even be able to start applying for a special permit through the planning board and, and working on it. But at least we'd be able to continue the application at the Department of Public Health level.
So us, oh, I'm sorry.
I was gonna say, just let me tell you, we've tried to do that before. And the Department of Health will not accept it.
No, if I may, Mr. Chairman, what happened before is somebody on the board tried to change the language from the template, and that's why DPH rejected it. So my question to you is, if you changed the template language, and let's say we did vote and sign this, and then we send it off, are they gonna reject it because the template language has been changed from what they normally accept?
And through the chair, maybe. So, so we've had some, we've had some letters where the template language was vastly different, and some where it wasn't so different, and some are rejected and some aren't. And, and you know, it's, unfortunately, the Department of Public Health is working extremely hard, and they have a lot of people over there that are dedicated to this, and they're thinking about this all the time. But frankly, they can be a little bit inconsistent. And so, what I would, what my proposal is, and you know, just cut into that, is to allow us to at least continue with the application process. It wouldn't, it wouldn't necessarily adversely affect the board, and perhaps Ms. Ehrenstein and I could sit down and, and sort of come up with what the language of the letter is, and you maybe refer it to town council to have it read through before it was done, you know. And then once we, you know, and maybe the board would have a follow-up hearing to finally approve that definitive language, you know, and so, and then we submit that to the department as part of our citing profile. They're waiting for our citing profile, we'd like to get it into them, and then, and if they reject it, so then we, we know that we gotta wait till, till June, or you know, until, until the eight, yeah. And we'll do whatever we can to work to get it approved as well. I'm eager to work with your planning board to help draft a bylaw that's compliant. And this is all we do, I mean, we're, we represent about a third of the marijuana businesses and applicants in the Commonwealth. I am, I'm having this conversation virtually every day, and reviewing a different zoning bylaw every day. So like, we'd be eager to work, and to the extent that I can add any value to the planning board to help draft a bylaw that would, you know, that would protect the town, but also allow for businesses to cite and bring a lot of revenue to the town, and help sick people and all that stuff, I'd be eager to do that, so.
I'm sorry. No, I'm sorry, you're the chair. I'm sorry, 'cause I'm interrupting your presentation.
No. You're the town administrator, okay?
So, you said the landlord is going to sell you a couple of acres, so, sorry. I just, your legal right to occupy the premises is what I'm getting at. How do you, do you have that with your application? Or do you kind of get this letter of non-opposition, bring it to town meeting, and then? Because I can understand as a business decision, you might not wanna buy something that might not work out, so I can, I can see that. Where does that fall in your...
So it's a lease with a purchase option, and it's been negotiated, and we're waiting for final execution from the landlord, so we actually think that we're there. In order to submit citing to the Department of Public Health, we actually have to have that binding interest on the property. So we can't just use this letter, we have to show the DPH that we either have a binding LOI, a lease, a PNS, something where we have site control. And so, that's absolutely required as part of our application process to the department. You know, one of the things a lot of towns are going through in the Commonwealth right now, and less so Dayton, but a town like Holliston, for instance, which has shown that they're inviting to cultivation and processing, or Fitchburg, which has a whole bunch of groups citing there, they're getting a lot of tire-kicking from around the country, right? People in California and Colorado are like, "Oh, there's only twenty-two dispensaries open for seven million people, and they just passed adult use, and that's getting going," and they're calling, "Oh, can I have a meeting?" And they got town administrators and town managers and chairman of selectmen and mayors who are wasting a lot of time with people who just don't know what the heck's going on in the Commonwealth and have no idea how to get something approved in sort of the progressive Puritanville, you know, zone that we live in. And this, you have exactly the opposite in front of you here. They've been negotiating with the landlord for quite a long time, they're local, this is like, this is, we're not tire-kicking, this is super bona fide. And if, in the event that we can get, you know, the, the board to, you know, vote, to issue a letter of support or non-opposition, frankly, I'd prefer support, because that shows when I'm in front of the planning board or everywhere else, that the selectmen are like, "Well, we're supportive of these guys and this plan." So, then we're gonna move forward with the process. This is, and you know, we have been here before, and our clients have been around the town too, so. So I hope that, and, okay, so if, if through the chair, I'll get back to, you know, my sort of little prepared script in my head, and I'll just knock it out quickly.
Sorry about that.
I hope you interrupt me, 'cause it gets boring if I just talk myself, and there's, you know.
As long as she doesn't stand up, you're okay.
Then I know I'm in trouble, is that what it is? So, so in order to become a medical marijuana patient, you have to be a Mass resident, you have to be the Mass doctor, right? And so you have to have a qualifying debilitating condition. Mass actually has a really good set of conditions with sort of a catch-all that, you know, really helps. Like PTSD, for instance, is one that, you know, helps, 'cause even though it's not specifically listed, you know. So, Mass has a great program with a lot of patients. Once you do that, your doctor will actually give you a registration number to go to the Department of Public Health website, and you'll put that number in, and they'll, finally they'll send you, just like a driver's license, like a plastic, state-issued program ID card. So you, you're, oh, you have this driver's license as a Mass patient, having visited Mass doctor, or now a Mass nurse practitioner as well can do it. Once you show up to a dispensary, from outside the dispensary door, you have to show that program ID card. They won't even let you in, you're outside, you know, March 1st, February 15th, in the, in snow, freezing conditions, you gotta show that program ID card before they're gonna let you in. Then they let you into sort of a man-trap or a Sally Port, like a limited access area, where the security agent behind, you know, a wall, behind a little screen, they'll check two forms of ID to make sure that you're still a current patient, that you haven't bought your legal limit elsewhere, and that you are who you say you are. So, then they'll finally, assuming all that checks out, they'll finally let you into the dispensary. So that's two forms of ID before you even get in. Once, once you get into the dispensary, they will, you have to fill out, the first time, you have to fill out an acknowledgement form that shows, you know, don't operate heavy machinery, don't, you know, drive under the influence. And sort of anything else that Dayton wants those patients to know, right? Don't leave, if your police chief says, you know, "When you leave, we want you to take a right only and not a left, because that, you're gonna funnel you away from a residential neighborhood," we're gonna put that in there, and we're gonna make sure people are following that. And they're gonna sign, or we're gonna at least record that we had that acknowledgement discussion with them, and they're gonna be, and so that's gonna be an important part of this process. After that, a patient has the opportunity to sit down and talk to somebody with an idea of what cannabis works for what. So you think about, you know, strains and methods of ingestion. And so, let's say I had MS, and I don't, never used cannabis before in my life, I can go in there and get somebody to talk to me about, "Well, what do I wanna do? Do I wanna take a tincture, how much do I wanna take, what active ingredients do I want?" Because what these guys are building is actually biotech. They're not building a marijuana farm. They break this stuff down into its individual components and these oils, and then they put it back together, so patients get consistent quality dosing every time. You're not medicating just with some weird cannabis name, like, you know, whatever it is, train wreck or something. You're medicating by labels that show consistent quality dose on it. So every time, so, "I'm sick, I don't know, I'm not, I didn't grow up as a stoner, but I want, this helps me, and it's proven significantly," I mean, kids with Javet syndrome, I mean, it's, so that's what they're making. They're gonna be building biotech in Dayton. And, so anyway, after that, the patient then gets to go look at, you know, different packages and different, you know, and different options that they wanna purchase. And it operates just like a jewelry store. The person behind the counter, the patient, "Let me look at that, open it up, show it to them, "Ah, it's not exactly what I want, you have something with this active ingredient," they'll put it back, they'll show them something else. And then finally, they make, if the patient wants to make a purchase, they make a purchase, and then they go to the cash register, and they enter, they check the ID again. So that's a third time the ID's checked. They enter the purchase into two databases, the Department of Public Health database and their own seed-to-sale tracking database. And then at that point, they leave. There is an exception in the state law for onsite consumption, for teaching somebody how to use cannabis, but we would certainly, you know, be amenable to having no onsite consumption as a condition of our special permit. That's, that's, that's something that's pretty standard. So, what I, what I'm getting at with this, particularly emphasizing this form of ID thing, is alcohol, I mean, you're board of selectmen, you've probably had to, you know, sanction or discipline a liquor store, or a local package store, or something that sold to some, or a bar or something that sold to somebody underage. You probably had to do that, but maybe more than once. And they, and they probably actually appealed that to the ABCC, and who knows what happens. They would slap on the wrist, a few hundred dollar fine, maybe if they did it three times in a row, they might have been shut down for a day or two. That's alcohol. Whereas these guys, if they do that, if they sell to somebody who's not a patient or underage, the state created two new, a six-month, two new crimes, a six-month misdemeanor for a patient who diverts it, and a five-year felony for these guys who are selling cannabis out the back door. And this is in the Commonwealth, where as of December of 2016, marijuana's legal anyway, right? And so, this is like really serious stuff, the, the amount of oversight. There is no business in Massachusetts that's more highly regulated or scrutinized than these guys. You know, if I was starting an engineering company, that I would come and I'd ask you for a TIF. I wouldn't come in and promise 3% host community agreement and sit and like, you know, make this pitch. I'd find a properly zoned thing, I'd ask you guys for something, and you know, and, I mean, you could open even some of the, the less desirable businesses, far easier with far less oversight. So, so that's sort of, in a nutshell, how the, the business operates. There's gonna be cameras everywhere inside and outside. So far, there haven't been any security issues with any operating dispensary in the Commonwealth. In fact, in Brookline, they actually solved an unrelated crime across the street from New England Treatment Access without facing camera. So that's security, and then finally, you know, there's, there's a lot of sort of perception as to what, what happens with one of these businesses, right? Adolescent marijuana use goes up, well, that's just not the case. Colorado's national average for adolescent marijuana use is lower, I mean, Colorado's average is lower than the national average. And that's with a fully developed recreational or adult-use program as well as medical. Property values go up. There is, the absolutely definitive evidence that property values are going up everywhere. There's no evidence that it's going down. And, crime, not a problem. This is like, it's kinda like the broken windows theory. They're gonna turn this place into a beautiful building with a great facade. And so, this is a, you know, this is a great thing for the town, this will help the patients of the town, and you got great local operators. So finally, you're gonna have local control, 'cause no matter what, you have cannabis here anyway, so your police chief's gonna have oversight, your planning board's gonna have oversight via the special permit. You're gonna have, and then a host community agreement, 3% off the top of their sales. And then jobs, you know, we'll commit to the extent that it's legally permissible to hire locally, you know. I mean, we can't hire in a discriminatory fashion, but jobs. And so, you know, great group with, you know, good credentials and offering everything we can to the town to get this letter and go forward with the application process. So, with that, that's sort of my spiel, and if I can answer any questions, I'd be happy to.
I actually have a question for Mr. Caruso, just because it's a security-related question. Do you suspect, I know you're gonna have a security guard onsite during business hours, that's fantastic. And I, we understand well, because we've had this discussion as a community before, how the security works when someone tries to enter as a medical marijuana cardholder. But do, what do you think the potential impact could be on our public safety departments, like our police and our fire, if any?
Honestly, I don't think there'll be much effect at all, if there'll be any effect.
If there were an emergency, like someone broke in, for example, is it gonna be the police who respond, the Dayton police?
Yeah, so what's gonna happen is, if the alarm will go off, we're gonna get a text message and alert right away. The police will be responding, the people will be responding to the building as well. We will have a printer that's basically right in the security room. They, we will have 24/7 surveillance, will take us, still capture, print it, print it out right away from the police.
And through the chair, another thing that we've been doing with some of our groups is, so that all the DVR cameras that they have, you can actually open a gateway on your, on your smartphone, so when the police are responding there, so if there's an alarm or whatever, they can actually look and see what they're responding to in real time. So if the, if the alarm went off, if there's a break-in, if whatever, they can say, "Oh wow, there's, somebody's actually broken in," or, "Oh wow, a tree fell on the," whatever it is, they can go and look, and they can look at all of our cameras, and they can, and they can scroll through them. And that's something that we've been doing with different police departments around the Commonwealth.
I have one question, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but while I'm thinking about it. You said there are twenty-two registered dispensaries in the Commonwealth?
Yep.
And I know you said there was little crime in these...
None.
None. But was that specifically the Massachusetts dispensaries, or were you speaking about all of them throughout the country?
Well, I'm sure, so, I'm an attorney in California also. I mean, I live here, I live on the South Shore, I've lived here for years, I'm raising the three boys here, but I'm also barred there. And so, in Oakland, in 1996, right, there was, there was certainly more crime associated. But it's a totally unregulated market, right? I mean, there was, it's all operated on this fiction of collectives and cooperatives, right? But Massachusetts being this sort of, kind of nanny-state or overprotective, we have the most regulated market. So certainly, I'm speaking specifically about Massachusetts. I, it would be false to say that throughout the country in the history of cannabis, it's been twenty-two years now that we've had medical marijuana in one state or another. Of course, you know, when you just had kids showing up with backpacks of weed and walking out with fifteen thousand dollars, you know, that certainly attracted a level of crime. Here, they're, you know, it's just not like that at all. It's like so, you know, I mean, everything is tracked, seed to sale, you know, at, at local level, and then when the Cannabis Control Commission takes it over, they're gonna be tracking everything as well, so. So yeah, I'm speaking specifically in Massachusetts.
When you say seed to sale, after the sale, can someone leave the facility and then just go sell that on the street? How does that work?
Well, I mean, look, people...
I support this.
No, I know, these are good questions.
I wanna preface this, but I'm curious, I need to, we need to know, 'cause we get the question.
Look, you, you're the selecting for the town, so I mean, it's, it's incumbent on you to ask these questions, right? So I'd certainly take, you know, of course, people can go and sell cannabis, you know, without, you know, illegally. I mean, how, how can I tell you not, but, like I said, there's a six-month misdemeanor for a patient who does that. Right now in Massachusetts, you can possess fifty pounds with intent to sell, if it's not related to the medical marijuana program, and wind up with nothing, right? And this, we have some of the most, I mean, in California, you can't even do that. We have some of the most liberal marijuana and drug laws in the country. But if you do, if you go in there and you buy it, and you find out, and they find out, the law enforcement does, you get a six-month misdemeanor. And all the, you know, and of course, I'm not gonna tell you that somebody can't just take it out of the packaging and put it in another package, but the packaging is all gonna be barcoded, and they'll actually be able to trace back what part of the cultivation facility, every single product was, was produced, and which patient bought it, and when they bought it, and all that stuff. So to the extent that that package, somebody does something really stupid, you know, we'll be able to figure that out. But yeah, but yeah, of course, I mean, we can't stop. I mean, all the regular laws against, you know, selling each other, you know, cannabis still exist. But remember, in December of 2016, adult use passed here, so people can give each other cannabis, you know, they just can't sell it without a license.
Correct.
Anything else?
When you were talking about, earlier in the presentation, you mentioned a new building, fifteen thousand square feet. But then you also said you would turn it into a nice building. Is there something up there you're gonna renovate?
No, the, the empty land will be, will have a nice facade on it. We're gonna, we know the conditions, reasonable conditions that are set forth by the planning board as to what this looks like, you know, down-shielded lights and whatever, you know, matching the local community and all that, that, we're gonna do that. And it's, it's actually kind of fun to do, if you're interested in architecture or anything, to Google, you know, marijuana dispensary architecture stuff. Some of these places around the country are just incredible what they're doing. I mean, they're, they're like, they look like Apple, you know, those Apple Store shops or whatever. I mean, they like have done some really awesome stuff, like in all kinds of different genres.
Are you gonna run 24/7?
Well, no, so our cultivation happens 24/7, right? Plants are growing, but we're not gonna necessarily keep employees there in the middle of the night to grow unless there's some sort of emergency. But our hours of operation will be set by the planning board, and you know, you know, typical hours of operation for a cannabis dispensary, they don't usually exceed eight to eight, eight to nine. Patients have to go before work to get medicine, or they have to go after work. So nine to five operations don't really work. But you know, the special permit condition as far as our hours of operation will be set by the planning board, and we'll conform to it.
Similar to a pharmacy.
Now, is it gonna have, you're not gonna have 24-hour security human bodies?
No.
It's gonna have video and alarm systems? Now, do you have, like, you know, house alarms? You can have a monitored system. So do you have a company that monitors all of this, so that if an alarm goes off, that company's notified, and also the police department, and whoever else?
Yeah, and Rob answered that, and through, I'm sorry, through the chair, I've been sort of just...
No, you don't have to say that, you just speak through that.
Okay.
She stinks, Brett.
You're trying to get away from it.
Well, I'm trying to, anyway, you also actually have to have redundant monitoring. So, instead of just one central company, they actually have to hire two, in case one of them doesn't respond quickly enough. So, and they have to have redundant forms of communication too. So it's either, you know, cell and landline, or cell and internet. So, they've really thought through the idea of having, you know, the, the extra level of security there with the redundant central stations and the redundant forms of communication for any outage. And you actually also have to have power backup for all of your DVRs and your cameras and your security system and the locks on your doors, so that somebody can't just cut the power. So, it's, they've really, I mean, I'm telling you, this, it's incredibly, I don't know, well-regulated, but sufficiently regulated, or thoroughly well, thoroughly regulated.
Highly regulated.
I think we can move on. I think a lot of these questions are things the planning board's gonna deal with.
I have a question, Karen Spencer. Why did you choose Dayton where the chances would be approached?
So, I mean, I can, do you wanna, do you wanna go for it, Rob, and I can answer too, but yeah.
So, I did choose Dayton, because my dad is very familiar with it. But I did approach Attleboro, because I knew from Attleboro. I was going through the process originally, but we've kind of backed off on that. There are four applicants in Attleboro, so. There are four other players in that ground as well.
Did you start, I think Mr. Woods had something to say.
Brother Woods. The issue about the police and how much they'd be involved, you can't say there's no crime. Obviously, crime is going to come. I just read an article in the Colorado paper, March 5th. The town called Steamboat Springs, population 12,000. They have three dispensaries. All three have been broken into some multiple times within the last year. So if that does happen in our town, you know, that's going to require time from our police department to do investigations, to come to the crime scene, to follow up on anything. So you can't say that it can affect the town anything in services. Obviously, our police officers are available 24/7. They have a JFIC call.
So we'll negotiate that in the host agreement, I assume.
Yeah, so through the chair.
Yeah.
Oh, sorry.
But you can't say that there's not, you know...
There's no crime until it happens.
We've offered 3%, you know, off the top, sort of the maximum allowable under the legislation that, you know, Governor Baker signed in the middle of last year, just to combat this one issue. And it's actually really supposed to be sort of a mitigation payment in case there's crime. When I said there's no crime, I'm just talking about thus far with the 22 dispensaries open in Massachusetts, there has been no crime. So, and in fact, the only sort of incident related to crime was the one they solved across the street. So thus far, there has been no crime. Of course, I can't, you know, I wouldn't be honest, say, I can tell you definitively there'll be no crime at any time in the future. But we, it is different here than Steamboat Springs. And it's different than, you know, we just are regulating the heck out of this, you know? And so we expect that that's going to continue.
Mr. Ryan's has something to say.
I just have a question. Tim Ryan, 316 B Street. If all the processes that you're speaking of were to fall through, what would be your actual timeframe to open that facility at that proposed location?
18 months.
Because you have to construct that.
I have another question. Sorry. As I've read that there's still applications that the state DPH is looking at right now. They've only approved 22 locations. If, what I understand, there's over 30 to 40 applications that are present right now being looked at by the state. So my thing is that if your application is not complete, will DPH kick back your application and put you down at a lower tier before you get an opportunity to resubmit your application?
So just to clear up some of those numbers, there's actually, so there's 22 open. And then there's a, there's a, the application phases, the Department of Public Health is different than the Cannabis Control Commission with the tiers and all that. So the Department of Public Health, there's no minimum or maximum canopy space. And so you're not going to be put to a lower tier. There's actually about another 100 provisionally registered dispensaries in Massachusetts. And they're either in the process of fundraising or construction or actually they're cultivating and they're just waiting to get their retail-ready certificate. There's about 100 of those. And then there's another, you know, couple hundred applications that are just sort of floating around in the ether. We expect by the end of the year for the Cannabis Control Commission to sort of take over the application process. This is all our office does. If we submit citing and assuming the department doesn't, you know, kick at the letter, you know, within a couple of months, we'll have provisional on the outside and we'll start construction. You know, we'll start pulling permits, obviously, you know? And, and, and so we, there's not, we can move it through rather quickly. So, and that's the Department of Public Health level. Who knows exactly what's going to happen when the Cannabis Control Commission takes over? And we work closely with Kay Doyle. She's actually the chairman of the Cannabis, or not chairman, she's the attorney for the Cannabis Control Commission. Hoffman, I've met with all of them here and there, except for Ms. Flanagan. And they seem to really be interested in keeping the timeline moving.
I just wanted, as I understand from the last time when the Development and Industrial Commission was working on the letter of support to prepare for, to give to the board of selectmen for us to vote on, the way it was described is that that allows the business entity to continue in the process of getting the license. That's as, so it's not, it should be incomplete at this, incomplete.
Yeah.
Sorry, the W side opposed to the N side.
Absolutely. Yeah, no, absolutely. I'm happy to talk to you about it too. If I didn't already give you my card, I will. You know, I'm an open book on this stuff. I love talking about it and yeah.
Thanks. So I think we ought to move on and let Mallory.
I just have a couple of questions. When do you plan to have a public meeting so that the, I mean, a public meeting where we can get the word out and maybe not in this facility, but people in town know information about your company? And the other thing is, other than the 3% that you mentioned, what are the taxes can we expect once the business is up and running? There would be commercial real estate taxes, there would be personal property taxes. Now, sales and things like that, what would that generate for the town?
So your first question, sorry.
I was just, you're a nonprofit, correct?
Currently, but that's something that we want to actually work on amending, you know? And we'll talk to council as to whether, because nonprofit is a definitional thing in your bylaw. I don't think it's actually something, I mean, I don't think it's something necessarily we have to keep. If it was a special permit criteria, then we would have to go and amend the bylaw on it. But the opinion that I've gotten from other town councils is that if it's just in the definition, since the state has changed the nonprofit requirement. But when I say nonprofit, when Ms. Ehrenstein says nonprofit, we're not talking about a 501(c)(3). We're not a public charity. We don't get any break on property taxes, period, right? People have been petitioning the IRS with their cannabis businesses for property tax breaks for 20 years and they've been denied every single time. So, so, but your first, the next real public hearing would be another one of these noticed. But then when we're in front of the planning board, I mean, you know, we have to notify Butters and Butters to Butters at 300 feet. We got to publish it, you know, and we got, we're going to follow that notice requirement and work with the town on getting the certified Butters list and getting everybody in there. Now, with the Cannabis Control Commission and then with the adult use application process, then you are required to have a public hearing within six months prior to your application at the state. This is medical still through the Department of Public Health. But we, but they basically lifted that requirement from 40A Section 5, which is what we're going to have to go through with the special permit granting authority anyway. So it's basically the same thing. We're just going to do it as part of our special permit.
So is medical taxable?
No. The Department of Revenue has said that medical is tax-free.
Okay, so it's the 3% that you're talking about plus real estate and personal property?
Yes. And then jobs and then people coming in and spending money elsewhere, you know, absolutely. So there's other, there's other downstream revenue, you know?
I understand.
As we get further into this, you'll have a much more detailed proposal about all of that stuff.
Oh, we have, we're going to have to get in, hearing and architecture and stamps and everything else, yeah.
When you're talking about property, you're talking about a lot of personal property. If you're going to have a cultivation site, all those lights, whether or not you're going to be hydroponically growing or not, you will be taxed on every single thing in your building. Let's consider this question.
Okay, so I think we need, we should move on because we're running out of time. But we appreciate your information and we have your contact now. And Mallory will be, it's not going to be fair.
So there's the chair, there's no opposition if I continue to work with Mayor Mallory on, or Ms. Ehrenstein on crafting a letter that we think might be compliant with the department and then come back at a future date to see if we can maybe get a vote on that letter?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, great, perfect. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Said, "Oh, my goodness."
Yeah, thanks, it's very informative. Appreciate it. Let's go on to... Any public input on anything else?
Timothy Ryan, 316 B Street. You moved publicly into so quickly in the beginning of the meeting that there could be some issues that could come up within the agenda itself, where how would you comment on that?
We're open to that. Just ask to be recognized and...
We also do it at the end again.
Yeah, I just want to mention it, that came up at Dyson Rehoboth the other night at the budget hearing. Because it's early in the agenda, but they explained that if there is something on the agenda that people like to come, would like to come in, all they have to do is get the chair to recognize them.
We've done, we've done that for the last year, so. And we just put, I mean, the reason we put it up front is sort of if somebody wants to say something, they didn't have to wait for an hour and a half.
To be honest, you really have a follow the agenda in a month. You bounce around from one thing to another.
But that doesn't preclude you from speaking up when you...
Let's move on, right. Is there any public input? No.
I just had a small question. We had a media candidates night sponsored by the library. I was just wondering when cable, is it going to be broadcast before the election?
It should be.
It's already being broadcast on channel.
Well, I haven't been able to find it.
It's on channel?
I think so, yeah.
People have asked me to say that.
I'd like to see it because I'd like to see how it did. It was my first time.
Okay, so talk to, we'll get you the information afterwards.
We'll get them in touch with cable.
It went well, I thought.
Okay, town administrators before, just going to start off with some budget discussion.
If you don't mind, just taking one pass on this one. So we did this a little differently this year, but tried to stay as close to the regular process as possible. This year, I met with, unless they waived their meeting, which was fine, with every board and the chairman and the various departments. And they discussed, you know, their needs for the upcoming year. And I will say that everyone is really fair in what their requests were. So nothing really outlandish. The town accountant did, you know, her thing where she put everything in the budget. We've submitted the budget with the department requests to the finance committee so that they could take a peek at what the departments were looking at and what they wanted to have for the next year. I have added in the document I just gave to you, there's a column TA Rex. That's, that's me. That's my recommendation. And then I added some notes about it. Due to the hour, I, and also I just workability, I don't expect you to digest all of this right now. I can email this to you. I do actually have one change. There is a decrease though, so nothing crazy, in the health insurance. The rates are going to be lower than what was previously submitted just because we budgeted high.
Just make that correction.
Right, so I'll email this to you. And if you'd like a printed copy, let me know. I did, I'm sorry, did you have a question before I...
I'll save it.
Okay, sorry. I used a lot of historical data. I would have, I went to FY17's previous, you know, what was actually, after the special town meeting put in. I went to expenditures up till the middle of March and made some adjustments based on that. Mostly this was in things like gasoline, office supplies. There were a couple budgets that just ran, you know, just went up by 2% in random lines without really any reason. So I adjusted those down and these are my recommendations.
Now, does the department need to know what your recommendations are?
So I am very sorry. I've told one, but I was not back here. I am not accustomed to Boston traffic, so.
Not a criticism, just a question.
I'm sorry, but I want to.
Just for the public, you were doing your procurement process.
I was. I was in Boston today. I had my test and got off the train at about 4:00. And I just, not used to that commute. It's different.
So you'll send this to us?
Look at this electronically, you'll have that one change. But if you, that's just the changes, to reiterate, in the health insurance line, it's going to go down. We budgeted early at 6%. It's going to be 5% increase. So that's, you know, with everything added up, we are actually under the levy limit.
Do you know by how much?
I want to say $223,000, but don't quote me on that. That's just me remembering it. And that's not with my recommendations. That's with the department requests.
And so, yeah, Jen usually puts something together that shows all that, right?
Yes, it's actually on the other tab of this. Just, I didn't make any change to that. I believe she sent it out on Monday to everybody, including you. But if not, I'll forward that over.
I didn't see it. I just had a question. The number that you've gotten for Dyson Rehoboth?
That, yes.
How accurate is that?
The town accountant told me that's how she has generally developed the formula every year. I decided not to mess with that because it seemed to have been working out. The town accountant.
Oh.
She uses just kind of a, add so many students each year and it's a best guess. The April 3rd is the hearing for Bristol Plymouth. So that also might change. And we haven't heard from Bristol Aggie. And again, the town accountant does a formula.
A student.
And I didn't change.
When we have reports, I can give you some, I went to the DR hearing last night, so I can give you some info there.
Thank you.
Not good. I'll just say I got info, but not good.
The info's not, like, it's not good news, you mean?
Uh, it's not good news.
Okay. I will make, I just want to make one. The Veterans Department put in a line to hold their breakfast. And I did zero that out. And I just want to explain, I am super for the veterans. Okay, thank you very much for all that you do, all that you sacrifice. I just feel, that is something I would donate to in a heartbeat. So hit me up. I will donate to that. But I didn't feel that it would be...
That was the Lions.
Usually it is. You put it in as a budgetary item and I just felt that that...
Yeah, the Lions actually contributed.
So they'll still be continuing?
Well, that's the idea. But you put it in as a budgetary item and it, to me, that doesn't, doesn't belong in a, in a operational budget. But I am very pro-veteran. I didn't want that to be misconstrued.
I have a couple questions, very brief though. One general question. I see the line for TA recommendations. Are these your notes in the note section?
Right, for me to indicate to you where I was thinking.
Okay.
And are you looking at the first page?
So what she is alluding to is there is a removed 2% increase from the chairman and the selectmen's members' salary. I'm not giving my position. We've already taken a pay cut, so, you know, we've already voted for that for ourselves. But I was just wondering who put that in there, basically. Okay.
Sorry.
No, 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 not at all.
I'll explain my position on that. I just thought that would be a good show to the public. That last year, you didn't have a town administrator. You were working on Board of Health functions as well, which is, I mean, I'm not trying to disparage anything that you do for the town.
Of course.
It's literally life in a fishbowl and very, very difficult. I just thought it would be a good show for the public.
No, I support, I'm fine with it, right? None of, I doubt any of us are doing this for the money.
So are we going to come back and discuss this after we get a chance to look at it?
Yes.
So we'll be discussing your recommendations and all that, or just as a whole?
If, my hope is that you take this information and formulate your own opinion. If it happens to be my, mine, great. But I'm just, this is an indication of after my meeting with these department heads where I think that it should lie. There are a couple, you'll see in the notes, there are a couple things going out to bid right now. Cleaning contracts, cemetery commission and their lawn maintenance, we're working on that. So there are notes in that. And I plan to just be very full and upfront about changes in costs this week.
So we'll look at this this week and then next week, we can maybe come back and if we have questions about it or...
And I'll email this to you because there are some color coding from the town accountant, which was very helpful. Thank you, Jen. And that's, that's it. But it is a lot of information and I apologize.
Mr. Chairman, before we move on, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't mention the fact that, I know you just started, it feels like 700 years ago, but you just started two or three months ago. I will say, I've only been on the board for two years now. But for me personally, and I'll speak for just myself, it's been one of the smoother budget processes and very together. So I just wanted to commend you on the work that you've done with the town accountant and the department heads getting everything together. Must be like herd and cat sometimes. We appreciate it and thank you.
I would second that. It's been very... This is Mr. Ryan's?
I have a question. When will the Finance Committee be meeting with the IRS?
We don't have the...
They indicated to me they were going to start in April. They're trying to, it wasn't just me, it was actually at a meeting. They're going to try to put it all together in four meetings. meetings. I don't know what their schedule is to reach out to the department heads, but they did it in four last year, so they are gonna continue.
They'll get out there as soon as they make a decision.
But I do know, I believe so. And the Finance Committee Chairman has received, not my recommendations, I don't even know if he wants them, but the budget from the town accountant, where, you know, showing the levy limit and anticipated articles. I will say that we don't have all of our articles for a town meeting, so that part of the sheet will be updated. We're just kind of in a limbo part of the process, but.
But this will be, what Mr. Evans has given us, this will be, when it's done, this will be the selectmen's recommendation to the Finance Committee how we think their budget should be, and then we'll have discussion with department heads.
Oh, okay.
Seeing that it's getting late, do you wanna?
I don't wanna skip this. This is not big. This is not big. It looks big. So, this is one of my goals.
Policy manual review is what we're talking about?
Yes. The policy manual review is one of my goals. In the very beginning of my career here in Dayton, I met with department heads one-on-one, and a few of them referenced this policy manual, as did Selectman Zagroffus, so I took a look at it, and I reviewed it and gave you my thoughts and opinions. We have already put into place some of these, such as the anti-harassment policy, which I've basically been a big cheerleader for, so that's up, that's coming in our second grouping. But for tonight, it's sections 101 to 107, and a lot of this is covered in state statute, talks about your role as a Board of Selectmen and what you're empowered to do. I don't believe that needs to be a separate policy. I do recommend a rules of order, or at least some sort of statement by the board collectively that you all have input into, definitely. So, I've referenced that in, in reference, sorry. I've referenced that when writing my opinion about these. And this bit of the policy manual is very general. It's about meetings and hearings. Most of this, that specific one is covered in the open meeting law, and since the open meeting law continues to be changed, to me, it makes little sense to have a policy that reiterates the law. That's just going to be changed by the legislature, and then we would have to come back and change it again. So, whatever, we don't really have to do, 'cause we have to apply it anyway, it's fine. And we have that agenda policy that has, I believe, been working well, but Karen is the real judge on that, so.
The danger of taking a mass general law and then putting it into our own procedures is then, you know, somebody could pick up the unrevised manual and say, okay, this is the law. So, I think it's much safer and better to.
Just to reference it, right?
Reference it.
And then keeps up with the changes.
Right.
I wanted to make one comment about rules of order. I feel like we all, for the most part, we follow them, right? Because they're already stipulated in parliamentary procedure, which comes from Cushing's manual, so every night and at the town meetings, that's what we're going by. I don't think we need to have a separate rules of order. The rules of order that was prepared previously and not really discussed, I understand it was tabled, we already do most of that, and I know the document was read, so that's why I'm referencing it. Everybody can go back and watch the meeting. So, my thought is just if we're already doing it, I don't think we need to make our own separate policy. That's all, on that. I feel like we can reference the handbook. I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman.
I was just gonna say, what I'd like to do, I don't think we have time to get into that tonight, but I would at least like to visit that.
Oh, I'm fine with discussing it.
And have a more general discussion between all of us about what we think we need to.
Of course, yeah, that's fine.
The only thing I would say on that is I agree with Dr. Z, but what I would like to see, instead of a whole set of rules that we have to follow, like you need more work, a brief outline from Cushing's rules.
I agree with that.
About, now, none of us are experts in parliamentary procedure. I try to learn from watching Mr. McKean at town meeting, quite frankly, but just the basic things, like, you know, motion, second discussion, and if there's an amendment, then you have to vote the amendment first, and if it fails, it's over, you go back to the original. Just the very, very basic stuff, not, not volumes.
If I may, what I think you're getting at, Selectman Goulart, is pretty much what I'm trying to say. What you're talking about is not a rules of order, it's simple procedures for us to follow.
But if we had the, just a brief, brief summary of Cushing's, because it's the adopted town manual, I'll call it. I don't know what else to call it. You know.
It's a manual.
There's two kinds of things, though. There's the Cushing's, but there's also the.
Robert's rule.
Well, we do, no, we do Cushing's.
We use Cushing.
And then, but then there's the, that, what is Selectman's manual?
Yeah, there's the, we have a handbook, Massachusetts, from MMA.
I would just, what I think is appropriate in rules of order is your delineation of duties. Things like personnel administrator. When you were the Board of Health, somebody was the Board of Health Chairman, that kind of role. If you become a signatory for some special thing, you know, more than just bills, but some sort of permit reviewer, I don't know, parking, I know we have a separate parking clerk, but a parking clerk.
Yep.
That's where I, and then that can change every year, or however you wanna do it. That's where I think rules of order help. The rules of executive orders. When is it appropriate to make an executive order?
You mean one person?
Well, histor, in my, my experience, it's been the chairman's been able to make executive orders, and the rule was, no matter what the executive order was, it would always be reaffirmed at the meeting the next meeting.
So, the chairman would be binding us to whatever he had, he or she had decided.
But there are rules as to when an executive order, like the Girl Scouts wanna sell cookies in the parking lot this weekend, but it's Thursday, executive order that that's okay. Something along those lines.
The snowstorm.
Right.
Okay, that's not an executive order, that's an emergency. And we already have a policy, because we have a, an emergency management committee head, the fire chief, so that the fire chief could declare an emergency. But, let's say the normal kind of emergencies, without a horrendous boom or something, I think it's the chairman of the Board of Selectmen talking to the emergency manager, and letting the other board members know as soon as possible. But I don't think one person should do that. Another thing, the police could declare an emergency, so.
But that's the kind of thing I think we need to get down.
So, this would be has to.
Yeah, we need to work those things out, depending, you know. Right now, we have an emergency committee and emergency management committee, and so I think that connection and their duties, coming back to the board, you know.
And that's exactly what did, did this, during the snowstorm.
Yeah, so down in the past, too.
I would just make one suggestion to my colleagues and to Town Administrator Aaronstein. I suspect that no matter what, whether it's something that could be perceived as controversial or not amongst the board, maybe to put the policy manual review on a night where it's not like a heavy, do you know what I mean?
I don't.
So that we have a little more time to go, you know, give our ideas, basically.
Or maybe we could just do three or four one night, the ones that we've reviewed, and just do those, instead of, instead of voting on whole sections, just say, okay, tonight we got these three that were sent out to you. Any questions? We'll just get this all done. We'll chime away.
So, that was the idea behind this. So, I think I'm revamping my process right now. So, I would ask that you vote on, in whatever way you want, 102, which is the establishment, the powers of the Board of Selectmen, because that is covered in state statute. 103, which delineates the roles of the Board of Selectmen and the Town Administrator, because we have done that in the Town Administrator job description back in January. And 104, meetings and hearings, because it is covered in open meeting law. And 105, regarding the passing of agendas and correspondence and all of that, because we do have that meeting agenda policy.
And yet, and you're just replacing it with something we already, yeah.
And then, I would also, and I don't know how you feel about this, we've never had the discussion, but 107 regarding remote participation, again, that's covered in the open meeting law. I don't know if you all have a feeling about how you don't like it, if you don't wanna use it.
That was already adopted by a previous board.
But I think it's there in open meeting law, so if we wanna use it, we just.
Correct, reference that, yeah.
So, I'll just read those numbers again. 102, 103, 104, 105, and 107.
The only thing I would say is, I think 103, I think we still need to have a little further discussion about the rules of the.
How to conduct a meeting?
Pardon me?
How you conduct a meeting?
No, 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 this is the role of the, the Board of Selectmen and the TA. Because it's, because it's a new thing, I think we need to hash that a little bit more and talk, at least talk about it. So, I don't wanna just strike it, I wanna put that on the further agenda.
I would actually piggyback off what you said, Mr. Chairman. I would include 102 in that, 103 and 102, because they're both referencing the rules of order, and it seems like we need to have some discussion on that before we approve anything that references them.
So, we're really taking all of it?
Does, I'm sorry, we've got 104.
102, 104, 105, and 107.
And 103, what's the reference to the chair and the clerk? 'Cause that's spelled out. If the chair is absent, the clerk takes over.
And that's the handbook, MMA, the handbook, it's all in there.
I don't know that we need.
But it's in, I don't think we need it in policy.
No, that's what we need to talk about.
All right, okay, all right, 'cause I didn't understand. All right, so we're talking about 104, 105, and 107? Is that what you're recommending we look at?
Right, 'cause we've just removed 102. Yes, yes. I'm gonna stop saying.
Somebody wanna make a motion to that?
Before, yeah, I'll make a motion. I've read through all those, and I'm prepared to vote yes on them and make a motion. So, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we vote to approve, excuse me, sections 104, 105, and 107 of the policy manual as prepared.
I think that, I don't believe that's a recommendation of the town administrator. I think she's, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but what is your recommendation?
I, the motion I would make, if it were me, move to strike policies 104, 105, and 107, but replace, well, we've already adopted the meeting agenda policy, so you don't do anything. So, move to strike those three.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we move to strike sections 104, 105, and 107 of the policy manual.
From the existing policy manual and replace it with?
Uh, nothing. Well, you've already approved that meeting policy, the meeting agenda policy that we're operating under, that's already been approved.
You're gonna go and like, put it back in, right?
We're gonna make a whole new policy book. We're gonna put a new date on it, we'll know that this is the one that we're sticking.
So, we're just, we're redoing this?
I need my marching orders, is what I.
I understand, okay.
Okay, so for right now, we're striking 104, 105, 107.
And that's it?
Do we have the wording, the replacement?
No, we're not gonna be replacing.
No, you're, you're just gonna strike 104, 105, 107.
Because they're covered in mass general law or another place.
Are you just gonna make a note, something, open meeting law, mass general laws, or something?
Reference it, so there's something there, do you know what I'm saying?
We don't, we've done that with our meeting agenda policy.
So, that's the replacement?
Right, but you've already voted to adopt that policy and operate with it, so you don't need.
But that's, I'm just trying to get the wording for this motion correct. We're striking what's here. If you're striking what's here, you're gonna replace it with something, or you're gonna completely omit it. But if you're, if it's a general law, or the open meeting law, or whatever, all I'm saying is, we've got a policy to replace one of these. So, we're striking the, what, the old one that was in the book. All right. So, that one's getting replaced. One's being stricken, and we got the replacement. The other two that we're going to strike, get them out of the book. All I'm saying is, I think there should be a note that says, for example, 104, we're gonna strike that, it's just gonna say open meeting law, which means if someone's looking in that policy book and has a question about meetings and hearings, you're saying to them, go look at the open meeting law.
Correct.
That's all I'm saying.
Do you think we need to do that, though?
I do. Now, remember, we're writing a policy for years to come, so it's not what we understand, it's a reference for the future. That's all I'm saying.
Our meeting policy about the agenda, we, we state that we operate under the open meeting law, and we have to, we're forced by law. I personally don't think that it's necessary, but if we wanna go above and beyond for our residents to come to know that this is what we do, we can make a statement.
If you think about it, if a question comes up about a meeting or hearing, naturally, the place that everybody would go would be the open meeting law. So, I don't know why we have to have it in another place in the manual, 'cause I think we need to cut the manual down so it's, it's usable, because if you get too much stuff in there, people can't find anything.
What I would say to that is, my impression of, my understanding, I should say, of what Selectman Goulart is saying, is she's not saying to copy and paste the open meeting law in section 104. She's saying, just write a sentence, correct me if I'm wrong, Selectman Goulart, that references it, and then they can go and look at it.
So, we will, when.
And I actually agree with that, because again, she's 100% correct. When our bones are drying up, we need the people who are on the board in 20, in the year 2600 to know what we were talking about.
We can put that in 102 or 103, because it says eligibility powers of the Board of Selectmen.
And then just reference it again.
And then reference it, and it's referenced again in the meeting agenda policy.
That I remember, absolutely.
Okay.
For the question, I think, is how to phrase this motion. So, you know, move to strike 103, one, no, 104, 105, 107, and reference that the board follows the open meeting law.
But I think we should do individual motions, 'cause we're replacing it with different things. So, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry, just withdraw your motion.
Yeah.
Start over.
Mr. Chairman, I make a, I'm gonna withdraw my previous motion. I make a motion that we strike section 104 from the current policy manual and reference the open meeting law in its place.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to strike current section 105 in the policy manual and replace it with our approved meeting agenda policy.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And, Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we strike one, our current section 107 in the policy manual and reference the appropriate MGL that covers remote participation.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, those motions carry.
Thank you, Town Administrator Aaronstein.
Okay, see that? We just got three off the list.
Only like 9,000 more to go.
But the book did get smaller.
Yes, that's for sure.
So, it was effective.
Okay, let's.
Sorry. You know what? Housing Choice Initiative, if nobody's here to talk about it.
Wanna move on?
Move that to next meeting. I actually have some questions. I read that on the train today. Seems like a good deal, I just wanna make sure.
Absolutely. And that has been circulated to the zoning board and now they're, and the planning board as well.
So, does somebody wanna make a motion that we delay the discussion on this till next meeting?
Yep. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to, under advisement or table this? Under advisement.
Move to table it till next meeting.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table the discussion of the Housing Choice Initiative until next week.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, let me, you have these annual reports from the building department. What is that about? Is that part of that?
That's part of the housing. It's to show how many houses we've built in the last.
Got it.
Context for the discussion.
If anybody's wondering, 300, over 300.
Okay, the Sewer Commission Commissioners Flow Calculations Study Discussion.
Yes, we should table that.
Want to table that as well?
For a request of the Sewer Commission.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table the discussion of the Sewer Commissioners Flow Calculations Study.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Office relocation discussion.
Conservation's okay moving, they're happy. So, just to, if you wanna vote officially, because we need to order the sign, that's.
Okay, so we're talking about.
Wait, what sign?
Outside Town Hall, I mean, Old Town Hall.
Just summarize.
But I thought we were using the sign that they found. I'm sorry.
Oh, I thought they, okay, sorry. So, the relocation discussion is centering around which departments will be relocating next door to Old Town Hall, and the wild card was conservation, but it's a pretty good deal for them. They have some more, they get some more space, and it helps us out, because we can change some things downstairs to help out some other departments, too. But Jim had, excuse me, the building commissioner had showed me a, a sign that they wanna order, that would list the, the departments that were there. Is that not something that the board is?
Oh, no, I'm, I just wanted to let the public know. We were talking about two different things. I thought Town Administrator Aaronstein was referring to a sign for the exterior of the building. It sounds like it's an interior sign somewhere in the building.
Well, now I'm gonna double check. It listed the departments that would be there, and this doesn't mean, what is the sign, Jim? But it, we needed to know. Who are we gonna list and tell, how do we direct the public for which one? So, how's verified?
So, we just need to vote on, on the department to go over there.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the relocation of the following departments to Old Town Hall, the zoning board of appeals, the Board of Health, the building department, Veterans Services Department, and the Conservation Commission.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
And for the record, Mr. Commissioner, yes, sign definitely. Inside.
I, Brett and I were there when we found the green sign, I'll call it, the Old Town Hall sign, and I'm wondering if out front, where the parking lot is, there could be the green sign, and then maybe hanging from it, the boards listed, and then around the back, again, the boards listed, okay? Because the, the sign is sort of historic.
Yeah, it is.
Appearance.
I thought it was going on the building. I think I made that up.
It might be. I mean, I'm okay, you need a sign.
As long as, as long as people who, obviously, we're gonna indicate the offices are in the lower level, and that's the access to it, but for the purposes of the public, the Old Town Hall, because there will be meetings held at the Old Town Hall, and when they're driving by, if they don't know, you know.
Okay, you go with that? Okay, we have a correspondent from the Commonwealth Mass, Department of Telecommunications.
So, we gotta do C.
Yeah.
I gotta go to that meeting at the crack of dawn tomorrow.
Oh, I just checked it off, yeah, okay. Let's see.
Mr. Chairman, I did go through all of this. What I can see is standard. The only thing is, from what I can see, you've got to, the board has to nominate a person to go and represent the town, and the other thing we have to do is to act on those bylaws that are required by HUD, that they've sent this thing called amendments to greater Attleboro-Tonton Home Consortium Mutual Cooperation Agreement.
Yep.
This is new, obviously. The rest of the stuff is the kind of stuff I've been reporting on, about money for, um, uh, first-time home buyers and money for rental housing improvements. And you've seen the minutes, so that's the stuff I reported on over the course of, uh, the meetings that I've attended. It's usually like two a year, unless something important comes up.
Okay, so, so what you're saying, we wanna, uh, vote on the, uh, these amendments to the mutual cooperation agreement?
And you have to nominate someone.
Yes, yes. I read that in here somewhere.
Well, I'll nominate Selectman Gulart, since he's been doing it, seems to be knowledgeable of it.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, any further discussion? If you want to accept.
Will you serve?
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, I will serve.
Thank you.
And then the next one, I guess, is the, uh, approval, uh, for you to.
To vote in favor. To vote in favor of these, because this is, this is something, because it's the mutual cooperation agreement, um, they have to have a quorum of the members, and, as I said, require, language and requirements stipulated by HUD, it's not like we have a choice. We gotta do it, and I hope we have a quorum. But yes, I need a, a vote of the Board to authorize me to vote in favor of the, um, requirements, language and requirements stipulated by the housing and urban development. That's where the money comes from.
You making that motion? Think you can.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, um, I move that the Board authorize me to vote in the affirmative on the amendments to the mutual cooperation agreement, Greater Attleboro-Tonton Home Consortium, as presented. Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, most, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Good work, Selectman Gulart.
So next week, I'll have a little report saying how much money we got for the first-time buyers and anyone thinking about, um, renovations. Good thing is, I saw projects and they were already in the works that are in Dayton, I picked those up, cause sometimes the bigger cities get the bigger piece of the cake.
Okay, we have a piece correspondence from the, uh, Department of Telecommunications and Cable.
Mr. Chairman, that was carried out from last week, so it's no longer valid, it hasn't been voted.
So do we need to take no action?
No action.
Okay.
We're gonna do what we did last week on it.
Okay, we also have something from, uh, Robert Sullivan, a representative, the representative from Comcast. Do we need to read the whole thing, or we need to summarize?
No, you don't need to, we can summarize. So, in all of the nor'easter mess, we ended up finding out, um, that our speed, our connectivity speed, isn't that great? And what do you know, we get this email saying, "Hey, your activi, your internet speed is not that great." So.
It's like his ears were ringing.
This is just a, um, notice that speed increases will vary based on a customer's current speed subscription. But the vast majority, majority will see an increase of fifty MPB, MBPS. So, um, if anybody wants to know about the changes, I, I'm assuming all, this would've come, you know, as a subscriber, this would've been mailed to you, but if you need it.
They sent emails.
Okay, but if you need it, we'll provide that to you.
I remember writing back and saying, "Is there gonna be an additional cost?" And the answer is no, but I gotta tell ya, I haven't found it's speedier at home.
Todd, you're really not gonna see it unless you're doing a lot of more fancy stuff.
You're not gonna see it unless you pick one of the really expensive planes, quite frankly.
But.
Okay, um, resignation of Mark Talbot. Okay, we have a, uh, you wanna read it, you wanna read it or we?
Oh, you can read it, I'm sorry.
We have a resignation, uh, from, uh, First Lieutenant Mark Talbot, uh, is an active duty, an active member of the Delta Company, I-195 Infantry, is currently serving a full-time, uh, active-duty operational support position for the Region One Homeland Response Force, under the provisions of 32 U.S.C., da-da-da-da. The active-duty operational support orders began on February 22nd, 2017, and currently cover a period from October 2017 until September 31st, 2018. In the future, this position is contingent on availability of FY19 funding. In the event funding is available, the position will continue from October 2018 to September 2019. Due to anticipated continued military service within Massachusetts Army National Guard, Lieutenant Talbot is regrettably resigning his position as a reserve police officer with the Dayton Police Department, uh, and assigned Mark J. Talbot.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the resignation from First Lieutenant, uh, Mark Talbot, uh, from the Reserve Police Officer List in Dayton with thanks and appreciation for his service to the town and to our country.
Second.
I just wanna say, uh, that, again, I echo what, uh, Selectman Gulart said. We appreciate your, your service to us, and certainly your, your, uh, service to our country, so we thank you and I wish you the best of luck.
Um, oh, yeah, we have a vote, call it.
Okay, I guess we do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Can I make a suggestion, that maybe we could pass on to, uh, a veteran's agent, uh, Mr. Hershey? If he could find out if Mark Talbot is gonna be around on Memorial Day, maybe he could be invited to march with us.
That'd be very nice.
That's a good idea. Okay, appointment.
Of Patricia Olson to the historical.
Yeah, I'm reading it, but I'm looking for the paperwork. Do we have a, uh, appointment of Patricia Olson?
Wasn't there like an email?
This was to correct an error she was inadvertently left off our reappointment list.
Okay.
Um, but she has been on the historical position since she's.
Okay, okay, so just reiterating it.
There wasn't any close votes.
Okay, so I'm turning in a, entering in a motion to appoint Patricia Talbot, uh, Patricia Olson.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Air conditioning unit for Old Town Hall.
This needs to be tabled until the next meeting.
How about the demolition award for Real Street?
This is no longer applicable, no action.
No action, ooh.
We awarded it, and it was contingent on the bond, and the bond came in.
We did, okay, gotcha, yep. Okay, we have a request for carryover from the Town Accountant, uh, I'll read it, it's from Jennifer Louise, Town Accountant, to the Board of Selectmen. Uh, vacation carryover request, I'm requesting permission to carry two weeks, eighty hours of my fiscal year 2018 vacation time into fiscal year 2019.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
Any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Yeah, there was, uh, I just, this was just an informational, and I guess we need to confirm, and I, I was asked to, uh, sign an event notification form that had to, has to go to the, uh, Mass DOT in order to get the permits for the, uh, Memorial Day Parade, so that was.
State Felice, too. State Felice, too, I didn't realize that. I heard it's a state highway, but I didn't realize.
So what they asked me to do, that's say, get the form going, so I signed this, uh, a couple of days ago, and I just wanna bring it up here, uh, I don't know if we need a motion to approve it, um.
Well, you already signed it, Mr. Chairman.
Why not, just inform me if you think we need a, a motion, you think we need a motion?
Like, we would've needed one before you signed it.
And I guess my question is a real.
Um, I'll make a motion that we acknowledge the signature of the Chairman of the Board for the event notification form that has to be submitted to Mass DOT for our, uh, joint Memorial Day Parade with Rehoboth on May 28th, 2018, starting at 10:00 a.m.
Second.
Okay, any further discussion? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We have any correspondence? Jeez. No?
Yeah.
Okay. We can do announcements. You wanna, you wanna start?
Trash bags, Sharps disposal containers, and recycling stickers are all for sale at the Board of Selectmen's office. Please call 508-669-6431 for more information. There are vacancies on the Development and Industrial Commission, the Land Use Committee, the Cultural Council, and the Capital Outlay Committee. You can either apply online on the website, or you can send a letter of interest and your resume to BoardofSelectmen@TownOfDayton.com, or you can do the old-school method and fill out the form, uh, here in our office. The Dayton Lions Community Food Bank Distribution will be held on March 24th, 2018 at 8:00 a.m. Pass, tax forms are available at the library. I'm gonna read the first one here, and then if Selectman Gulart wants to finish. Dayton Parks and Recreation's Eighth Annual Easter Egg Hunt will be held Saturday, March 31st, 2018, uh, promptly at 12:00 noon behind Town Hall. Dayton residents up to ten years of age are welcome, and their parents. Please bring your Easter basket and a camera for pictures with the Easter Bunny. Also, the Dayton Lions will be accepting non-perishable food items for the Dayton pantry. Before we move on, I just wanted to ask, um, thank you for putting the Eighth Annual Easter Egg Hunt on, did you have anything you wanted to say about it?
No, uh, we're ready to go, I'll be, uh, just, uh, ready, and, um, we're, we're, I'm sure, uh, due to help out, and, um, the, my students, Jared, I'm just, I'm speaking, I'm like, that was.
For the Easter Bunny.
The Easter Bunny is available. Okay, okay.
Somebody's gonna stand guard out there.
So, I'll give him a ride this morning, so. And, uh, no, we're just, um, we hope that we have a good turnout, and I'll hope, again, donations for the food pantry, uh, greatly appreciated.
Do you need any more volunteers on, um, March 31st?
No, I think, uh, we're just, we're pretty much all set, we should be ready to go, so.
You could show up with a basket, if you wanna help.
Can I take a picture with the Easter Bunny?
And it will be helping to shine, and I've looked at the forecast, and.
Looks good. Don't let Mr. Woods and Mr. Ferry get me in the bunny rabbit.
Okay, the Tonneri Community Table Meal Center invites Dayton residents for lunch every Monday through Wednesday from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. There's also a family cafe dinner on Thursday from 4:30 to 7:00 p.m. There's no charge and no questions asked. All meals are served at the church hall of the former Saint John's Episcopal Church, 378 Bay Street in Tonton, Mass. In addition, breakfast is served from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m. on the third, fourth, and fifth Saturdays of every month. Those breakfasts are prepared and served by volunteer groups in the area. TAC, uh, TAC T is what they shorten for, Tonneri Community Table. Uh, appreciates the support of Dayton residents at their meat raffles held on the second Thursday of every month at Giorgio's Restaurant in Dayton.
STEAM Posium, S-T-E-A-M, stands for Learning and Careers in the Field of Science, Technology, Engineering, Arts, and Mathematics. Dayton-Rehoboth Regional High School is hosting an exciting free family event on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at Dayton-Rehoboth Regional. And we will, uh, we are having a, um, display area with the Town of Rehoboth, so, um, if you could stop by, there's gonna be a lot of good information. And Dayton-Rehoboth are doing this jointly, because it's a requirement of the EPA that we expand our adult education program as it relates to, uh, adults and businesses. We will have some information for children, too. Rabies Vaccination Day, Saturday, April 21st, 2018, 2:00 to 3:00 p.m. at the North Dayton Fire Station. Twelve dollars per pet, cash only, and that's Dr. Bruzy. Also, chipping will be available, and that, uh, would be a check paid, uh, made out to the Town of Dayton, the amount of twenty dollars. And, um, licenses will be available, and of course, license fees vary with the, um, male and female spayed, and neutered pets.
One last thing, the annual town election, how is this not on there? The annual town election will be held at Dayton Elementary School on Saturday, April 7th, 2018, from 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m.
Selecting reports, anybody?
We never reported on the Citizen Planner Training Conference, so I just wanted to do a brief spiel.
Okay.
Um, uh, two weekends ago, um, Chairman Taylor and I attended the Citizen Planner Training Conference. It's something that I, I had attended two years ago, um, with Ms. Heidi Baki, when she was the Planning Board Office Manager. Um, I learned a lot, and, um, we'll be able to give you a little more information when we go to discuss the Housing Choice Initiative, um, probably next week or the week after. Um, but it was very informative, I know I saw Jack, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, speaking to a lot of different folks on different planning boards, zoning boards, um, town planners. Um, so it, it was a really good time, um, and I have learned a lot about affordable housing, fair and affordable housing. I know you went to a lot of good, um, sessions, so very useful.
It was, and you know, it's interesting, though, it was really for planners and zoning people, but very few Selectmen, but it was, it was well worth it, because, uh, made a couple of contacts about some things we're interested in, and, uh, very informative, so.
Mr. Chairman, last night I attended a public hearing on the FY19 Dayton-Rehoboth budget. Currently, the budget shows an increase of 10.68 percent. The D.R. Committee will meet with the Rehoboth Finance Committee on April 4th. No date has been set to meet with the Dayton Finance Committee yet. Plans include returning the Little Falcons preschool, uh, to Dayton Elementary. I'm not gonna go through all of this, um, but I only, I only made note of, obviously, our schools and, uh, the high school. We're looking at reduced classroom sizes, uh, meaning less children and more rooms. Uh, they're talking about asking Dayton for six-modular classrooms, these are not currently in that budget, so this would be a separate warrant article. There is, uh, if they get their modular classrooms, there will be, uh, a point-two-five increase in custodial time. Uh, they reviewed enrollment, um, the current D.R. Budget right now is forty-four million, one ninety-nine, five forty-five. That's four-four, comma, one-nine-nine, comma, five-four-five. Lease payments are not in the operating budget, and that will probably be a separate warrant article. Now, the killer is, there is an increase in the special ed budget, uh, FY19 over FY18 of almost two million dollars, and it's because of residential placements. There will be some additional costs for special ed transportation, and, um, but the, uh, residential placements are killers.
And those residential placements, like in coop homes, or in, uh, like foster homes, or?
It's living at a facility, I can tell you that. I don't know the, the age span, and I don't know how many are Dayton, how many are Rehoboth, but, um, as far as the increase in transportation, obviously, children are living at, at a placement, they're not being transported daily. But what they're going to look into is, um, they're bidding, they were gonna act on the school transportation last night. Regular day trans, the, you know, the special needs transportation, they are going to contact other communities to see, for example, if Norton is sending a child to a certain place that we are, maybe the roof can pick up our child, and we can save instead of sending a vehicle over there, and Norton sends a vehicle over. So they're looking at trying to do some of this on a regional basis. We do it internally when we send, we hold classes in certain towns, we transport those children. But this is, this is, um, out-of-district placements, but they get transported, they're not, those aren't residential, okay, so. And evidently, these came out relatively recently, these were not known, so, uh, it, it's a big, like, wow. The other thing is, um, the wood boiler's not running yet, but once it's up and running, because of the, uh, wood chips and the funding, they're expecting to get about twenty thousand dollars a year refunded to the district, once that unit is operational. The business manager said they saved over fourteen million dollars through the train performance contracts that they've had for energy savings. And, uh, they made a, they made a plea for, uh, Rehoboth residents to approve the roof at the regional high school. And, um, the, the feeling is, all of our school's in pretty good shape now, as far as everything. If we can get the roof at the regional high school, um, we can add that to the list, and they said, barring anything unforeseen, our schools should be in good shape. And this is both towns and the district, should be in pretty good shape for about twenty years, and we should not be looking at having to build schools. Again, barring anything unforeseen. And the last thing I wanna mention is that the fiber optic, uh.